All right, it is ten o'clock. I want to welcome everybody. We are going to start with a public hearing. Do we want to do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So we've essentially got two meetings to conduct this morning. The first one being an open public hearing for the 2024 budget. So I want to give anybody in the public audience an opportunity to ask any questions or make any comments as it pertains to the budget. Yeah, thank you. That's a good point. So the budget has not been approved or adopted in any way. This is to continue to discuss any wishes or requests, concerns that you have. Is there any comment?
We have to leave the meeting open?
No. If there is no comment, there's no comment. It was posted at 10:00 a.m., is it?
Right.
That's correct. Okay. I will ask again if there's any comment or question.
I move to adjourn and be closed.
Sir.
We need to, one more time, ask if there's any questions or comments from the public in regards to the 2024 budget. Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion by Tracy Martin, seconded by Paul Ryder. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, so the public hearing is closed. So we will now open our regular monthly council meeting. We did. We did already pledge allegiance to the flag, so.
Not generally. It is, excuse me. I apologize for interrupting. Ten-ten is what it's posted for, so you could certainly do non-vote items if you have any preliminary items, but otherwise, we should wait six minutes until the posted time in case somebody wants to be here from the beginning. Was there a prayer today? You could do that if you wanted.
We do not have.
Any kind of housekeeping items you could do for all of them?
So how to do these? So we did have a motion and a second and close the meeting formally.
And that's fine.
Do we want to open it back up or?
No, you're, since it says 10:10, and I believe the posting for the council meeting is at 10:10 a.m. At 10:10 a.m., you just call it to order like you would a normal meeting. And my only point is, in the next five minutes, if you've got just some, like, hey, let's talk about when we're going to meet, something that's not substantive. You got some or you don't?
I need to know when we're going to meet with the department heads to discuss what you have tentatively decided before you approve the budget. Do you want?
Historically, we've always done that right before adoption.
But I don't have, I have not been able to tell them anything. It's not my call.
Well, we'll be at the October meeting, so.
October 20 or 19?
19. So could we schedule that for, just like we did today, but just like 10 or 15 minutes prior to our normal meeting start? Is that enough time? Do we normally?
Can we just schedule it like at 9:00 a.m. and maybe 9:30 and give a half hour? Or is that what we did before?
Maybe it was about a half hour.
Yeah.
Okay. We could do, we could do 9:30 on the 19th.
But we do that in the budget hearing, don't we?
Say it again.
We do the comment in the budget hearing.
You absolutely can. You could do, you could do the public comment after it's been moved and seconded and you put it on the floor. That's part of the discussion. You open it up for the public comment and then you close it. As long as you do it before you vote, you're fine.
Normally, we have just the department heads come in and they will explain to you if they have a problem with one of their line items or whatever, and it gives you time if you need to correct it or say no, one or the other. But I think it's nice for them to come in and have their voice.
I agree. It would be my recommendation that we meet at 9:30 on the 19th.
So moved.
We'll do that during the meeting.
Okay. Oh, well, that's.
Is there any concerns around that or any other comments on that?
We can talk about boiler football.
Or what they're up.
Boiler basketball.
There you go.
There you go.
How would you like to pressure that, though? Anything short of a national championship. Coming back is a failure.
It's kind of true.
I can ask that everybody.
Anything getting out of the first round is a huge win. If we have to get that backwards.
Yeah. Yeah, so normally we, normally we would have a pastor or minister from a local church come in and offer an opening prayer. I was not able to get anybody scheduled for this month, so we'll just take a moment or so if you want to use that for personal reflection or personal prayer, and then, and then we'll commence with the meeting. All right. Do we feel like that's been a significant amount of time to?
Give it till 10:00. 10:00. We've got a few minutes.
Okay. Let's go ahead and continue with our monthly meeting. I appreciate everybody's patience there. Council, in front of you, you do have the consent agenda. Is there anything that you would like removed from the consent agenda to be discussed individually?
Sure. I'm your favorite.
Oh. I would like to pull the jail request.
Okay.
I also want to pull the highway. Just pull them all, it's easier to just pull.
Okay. Anybody else have anything that they want to designate for discussion? Did everybody get a chance to review the minutes from last month? Do we have a copy of those? All right, minus the jail transfer and the highway department transfers, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Sir, second.
All right, we've got a motion by Scott Ayers, seconded by Josh Plou. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Motion carries six zero. For the record, all council members are present this morning. Okay, so we'll take some time to discuss your concerns or questions on the jail and highway. Josh?
Could you step up a little? Sure. So can you just kind of give me an overview on?
For the jail one?
Yeah.
Jail transfer? So that is for inmates supplies. That's what we buy there, like the razors, toothbrushes, toothpaste. And their clothing was really bad this year, like the orange uniforms that they wear, like the elastic is given in all of them, and they're falling down on them. So we needed, we need new.
So this was in this budget request as well? And that's what's?
Yeah, it's in there, but we also like that is, there's no money left in this account this year. There's only like $147. And that was just for, like, the toothpaste, toothbrush. We haven't even bought any uniforms or anything like that yet, so.
So if we would approve this transfer, does that mean you would not need the amount requested in the 2024 budget?
Not as much, not as much in that one. But no, this is mostly for, like, because we're out, like, to buy their toothpaste, like all their daily supplies that they need. That account, it only has like $147 in our bank, so.
What changed?
We are just completely full. Like, we've never had a break this year of. None of the other counties are holding boards right now, so we're completely full of inmates. Like, we have the whole 40-something inmates, so.
It's kind of big.
And the prices have went up on everything, too, so.
I was going to say, I would most probably assume it's inflation more than. Because we've been full for three.
Yeah, I mean, everything's went up. All the prices of everything's went up, too, so.
I'm sure the uniforms are the big cost of it, correct?
Yes.
When you do this, do you just replace all the uniforms?
We don't replace them all at once.
Okay, so you do like as needed?
Like, every year, if there's been money left, that's usually what we do with it, is try to buy some extras. But for the last few years, there's some up there anyway, so.
And that's the only place that you have to transfer out of, is out of county?
No.
I think it's a wrong. Because I mean, if you're, reason you're incurring more expenses is because you're not using out-of-county, then that's the right mechanism, but, like, what is the? How long do these last?
The uniforms, they last a long time. I mean, I guess it just depends on how rough the inmates are on, too, so.
Well, and that's what I'm trying to figure out. This is an anomaly that we're feeling with? Or this is a systemic problem and we have to look at how we're budgeting it?
Well, I think we should definitely make sure we put it in the budget book every couple of years to get at least half of what we need of the uniforms. Because if we get to where we are now, we have, they're all in terrible shape right now, so. But like I said, for the last few years, we haven't had any extra money left to buy any, so.
Sorry, I'm just looking.
Okay.
Anybody else want to go ahead and add any questions?
We have a line for jail bedding and linen, so.
That's for, so the last couple of years, we've been trying to buy new mattresses, like, at the end of the year for them, because those get a lot of wear interior also.
So where do you pull, where do you normally pull the uniforms out of?
We try to pull it out of that one or the inmate supplies if there's any left.
Looks like it would be inmate supplies.
Yeah.
And that line, I mean, we've, we funded $8,000 last year, and, I mean, they've, they've used it.
In '22, it was 14, so that's, they probably got some then, too. So it looks like every year you're transferring.
That was my real question, it's like, why is this happening?
Yeah.
Like? If it's.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean.
No, please, I, I'm just trying to get to a better budgeting process where, like, these, these are taking into consideration so that we know no costs.
Yeah.
That we're not doing transfers later.
And I gave you that in the budget for next year. I gave you guys a breakdown of, like, how much this stuff costs.
That's all, that's why I was.
And that's what I'm trying to get to, like, a better place, where we're not, where we have uniforms for them to wear that aren't falling off of them as they walk down the hall, so.
It seems like you've got an idea.
Yeah, for sure. In my mind, this, these just feel like consumable. I'd like, like, they break down and don't last forever, so you're, you're constantly like.
Yes, we need to be replaced and.
Razor blades and toothpaste and some of the other things you talked about, like, that just gets used up.
Yes.
So.
How many do you find a happy medium to where you're doing?
When do we start?
A fourth, a fourth, a fourth every year?
Yeah.
That would be.
If they'll last. But it's going to last more than this year.
But we, but like, like she said, in '22, we were 14, so that's, that's doubled. So then you're half in '23, then, then you're, if you consider this and what we would budget for '24, it's kind of double again. So it's like, it's almost like this, like, jump every other year, in my mind.
Well, and if we're just accustomed to that, that's fine. You know, if that's how they want to do it, or they buy so many every year and just keep the rotation up, but like.
It's a little cleaner doing it that way.
It's much cleaner doing it that way.
You just would put in there, you know, every year you're going to replace the fourth of them instead of the half of them, and.
Yeah, and that'd be great if we could get to that point.
And we need to also remember and consider we've got new administration there, too, which may or may not be effective.
One of the things that really concerns me about this is are jails about to be twice as large?
Yes.
So mistakes get twice as big.
Yes.
So we have to do a better job of understanding the real annualized cost.
Absolutely.
Of these things, of consumables, and what their expenses cost per inmate.
Yeah, and that was my idea of breaking down. Like, I think I printed you guys out the, like, the actual, how much every bed costs, or like, all the uniforms. And I went with, like, the cheapest that we could find, I think, uniforms. And so that was my idea when I printed that out for you guys for next year's budget, was so you'd know that we, we do need this more often than once every three or four years. You know what I mean? Like, it's something that we should budget for. I really think it, I think all we should have been budgeting for, so. Like, to buy half one year, half the next, or replace them all, or?
Yeah.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah. Obviously, I don't want to be throwing away good stuff, but like, when, when this budget is doubled what it is now, like, mistakes hurt worse. So, I mean, it would help us a lot if you, if we could start saying, start aggregating to numbers and saying, an inmate supplies for a year costs X.
Yes.
So we can say, you know, it takes, what is it? $25 a year, 100, I don't know what that word is. Just 100 is an easy number. And we have an inmate population of 750 or 75, so it's.
Yeah, this is what it's going to be.
This is what it's going to be. That would be much easier for us to be able to understand and go through the budget process than, because we have no context. I mean, you sent, you sent information, which is helpful, but it doesn't tell us how they're consumed.
Yes.
Or, or the expected consumption over time. So that would be helpful for me. So anybody else that thinks differently, please?
And I did write all that out, but I don't know that he turned it in, what I wrote out for him, like, so that he could tell you guys. But I don't know if he brought that in, like, the.
We read, well, I read the.
Okay.
Thank you, but I don't know that it was specifically about that.
Okay.
I move to approve the transfer for the jail from '84 to '85.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion by Josh Plou, seconded by Paul Ryder. Any other questions or discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Sit down. Okay.
All right, so the next one to address here is the highway department. Scott, if you want to come up. I will say, Josh, I don't know what your questions are, but I will say before Scott gets up here, I did meet with him last week. This first one, this transfer of $35,000 is to address the windows at the Flora Garage. We budgeted for that in '24, but we talked about trying to get those replaced before the winter, and he had room to, to transfer. So I told him to go ahead and put the transfer request in, and then we could adjust the budget accordingly.
My overarching question is, what is the condition of the building? Or is the ongoing cost going to be? Like, because we don't, like, without a capital plan, like, we really don't know what the long-term maintenance, repair, capital improvements for the highway looks like.
Is that new? We need, I mean, we have windows that are falling out on the road. That's what we're just going to do with that. The, like, the brick on the outside is, like, chipping, getting holes big. You know, I don't know, I don't even know who does that. So what we have to do to fix that? I need to find somebody to be able to ask. I don't know anybody that does that type of work.
Will the $35,000, this is just one building? Will that bring that building up to where it will last 10, 15, 20 years?
That will take care of the windows.
This was my question. I think that this is, I think this is a downplaying on what they.
Yeah, I, I would say there's more to do there in terms of overall projects, and, and you can correct me if I'm wrong or, or cut me off at any time, but that's special. Anyway, I would say that the windows is one of probably several projects that need done there. But because of the seasonal component to windows, when this budget gets enacted January 1, it would be nice to have good windows in place already before the winter. That was what we talked about. And then, and then we can go back and adjust the '24 budget to remove the windows from that, the cost of the windows from that line. So this isn't going to, like, address the whole building. It's just one thing in, in probably several things that need done.
Do we need all the windows or are we blocking it?
We, we are blocking some of them now. Because there's a building that's got windows. There's the building and then the wash bay. There's windows in between. We're going to, we're going to not put windows in there. We're just going.
I just think that $35,000 must be a lot of that.
There is, there's about 15 or 17 windows.
Did you get, like, three bits?
That's not a lot for $30,000.
I just.
I mean, they're not residential double-pane windows. They're like.
It's an old building.
It's an old building.
Probably seven-foot.
They're odd sizes.
Some of them are that size, probably. I just, I just did my whole house residential windows, just $8,000. There was like 11, I think, 13?
You know, my, my thoughts on this is, too, I doubt that that building, yes, it needs repair. It needs some bricks reordered. But that we're, we're, I doubt we're going to replace that building. I mean, if we did build a new building, it probably would be, leave that one there and then build a new building in a different spot someday. So this isn't money wasted, in my opinion. This is money well spent.
I mean, there's a couple places where people walk and windows that fallen out and busted. I was just thankful that nobody was walking through there when they did.
Well, I would think people wouldn't break in or, you know, how mischievous some of them are. It's not good to have broken windows. They're going to sneak in.
Yeah. Well, I'm not, I mean, the project is, my, my question really is, like, what's next? Or, I mean, like, has the building just been neglected?
Yeah.
And now it's going to have a bunch of deferred maintenance that we need to incur? Like, if, if that's the case, we need to start seeing what those numbers look like.
That, that building was built in 1948.
Yeah.
So it's just, from, over the years, it's just starting to deteriorate.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, I, I agree with you. I guess what, what I'm trying to get is, like, this is the condition that it's in? This is the condition we want it to be in? And then agree on where we want to be? And then how much does that cost?
Because that's what I'm thinking. If you're going to do the $35,000, it's just mostly the windows, then what we budgeted for next year is going to be the building.
Perfect.
The mason work in that.
Maybe just a little bit where it's.
I don't think we're going to do an adjustment.
I mean, that's an option. Yeah, we could do that. I don't know what that cost would be. I don't think, do you know what that cost would be?
I, I need to find somebody that does that type of work.
Tuck point? Huh? Tuck point? Is that what you're doing with the brick? Is it glazed? Is it glazed block?
And it's popping. They're exploding.
Yeah.
The faces are all break.
I mean, if, if any of you want to stop by, I can show you what all, what all I'm talking about.
I'll make a motion to approve this highway consent.
Sir.
Is this just the one line or all four?
All four.
I'd like to ask what the uniforms and testing, why is that $6,000?
Any new hire, we got to do, we do a drug test. And, and we usually buy shirts with a kind of logo on them, and that's, that's for.
Wouldn't they leave? Do they hand those back in?
No, because they're, they've been sweated in. And we give them, we get, we have been getting them, like, twice a year for summer and fall. We've done that for 10 or 12 years, probably.
So is most of this testing or most of this uniforms?
Most of it's uniform.
And so it wasn't budgeted?
Not, that I know of, would never have.
Where do you pull it out of before then?
I couldn't tell you. I wouldn't part with that.
Is this where you get your Carol, their clothing allowance?
Yeah, there's still a lot of clothes.
Is that a different line?
Yeah. It was clothing allowance for shoes.
I know, I know what it is. I'm just asking if it's the same line.
Oh, no.
Because that would make more sense.
So where did they come out of before then, you think?
Well, they buy the shirts, but they give a clothing allowance to the higher end.
I guess my point is, like, we would really like to get to a point where we're talking about what needs done in the next five years, not what's been broken in the last three months. So that would help us out a lot, to understand where, what's coming down the pipe.
All right. I'll try to find somebody, maybe get an estimate on that, and I'll look around and see what else we need to do.
I seconded Paul's motion.
So we put in for uniforms almost $20,000. Do you mean to tell me uniforms are going to start topping $30,000? That's a lot of uniforms.
Where do you take that?
I say there's no other place for shoes. I mean, I don't see any line that you could be pulling out.
I don't see any concession allowance. I mean, but I. I don't see any in cessleting allowance, but I mean, but I know you have it, I just don't remember where it comes from.
That's got to be in with the uniforms and testing.
Probably, probably is. I thought we took out something else, but I think it probably is out there.
Which they can have a lot of in the later ways. But that's what I'm saying, if they don't, they don't, a lot of counties do the, the exchange, the, the scent test, where they bring in their stuff, and that, didn't they do that a lot?
They stopped that. That's a different story, that, they've stopped most of that.
Let's don't go back to it, please.
It's not what it does anyway.
I'm just saying, thirty thousand dollars for uniforms, that's a lot of money.
That's two thousand dollars an employee.
Yeah.
What, with the testing, then what portion of that is?
Any other questions or comments on these transfers? We do have a motion by Paul, seconded by Josh.
I just would like for you to look into how much uniforms and that are really costing, and how much testing is costing, and with our, if you're still having turnover like crazy in that, I think some adjustments are going to have to be made.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our regular meeting agenda. So through August, um, our department should be at about sixty-seven percent year-to-date utilization. Our county general balance right now is at seven point eight million. Rainy day, and, and not all of that has been, some of that's been appropriated, but, um, rainy day at four point three million, riverboat at three hundred and eighty thousand, just shy of three eighty-one, actually. So like I said, about sixty-seven percent year-to-date is, is kind of a target. The coroner is at thirty-seven percent year-to-date. EMA at sixty percent year-to-date. Was there a question, Ben? Okay. Local Roden Street at fifty-three percent year-to-date, the highway department at forty-seven percent year-to-date, and Carroll Manor at fifty-one percent year-to-date. That is everything that I have, uh, to report. Scott, I'll pass it on to you.
Thank you. Mine, except for the recorder, she happens to be at seventy-four percent, but that's obviously not user perpetuation for her.